Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the...
We've got to tell them.
Oh, okay. Let's make sure we're being taped. We all set? Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Selectment Meeting for January 5th, 2022. Let's start with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just wanted to convey Mr. Winchell and his family are all sick, or quarantined, I should say. He just wanted us to, you know, let everybody know why he wasn't here. So they've been... I know one of them had COVID. So hopefully by next week, he'll be back. So I just...
They're on the mend.
They're on the mend. So there we go. So we'll see him next week.
Well, we wish them well.
Yes.
Okay. Call meeting to order, which we've done. Town Administrator's Weekly Update. Jennifer.
Thank you. The first thing that I have for you is information from the Treasurer in regards to Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust. This is another health insurance program that's offered through Maine Municipal that she wanted you to review, and she's willing to come before you in the next couple of meetings after you have a chance to go through it and compare it to the current plan.
Okay.
So there are new employee contribution rates?
This is a... We currently have a private health insurance company through Aetna that we have. This is through Maine Municipal, so it's completely different all around.
Something we're considering going to?
Something you'll consider, yeah.
I see. Okay, great.
Thank you.
So will that be on our future agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Probably a couple of weeks, right?
Couple of weeks. She wanted to give you some time to review it.
That's great.
Yep. Next is just kind of a conversation about the parking lot. It's been mentioned at the last couple of Selectmen's Meeting. With your permission, we'll have to table it one more week until Mr. Winchell's back. He's certainly a big part of making the decision of what you guys want to do, possibly advertising. You guys have mentioned more than once that you wanted public input on the building.
Right.
So maybe we advertise that it's going to be on a future agenda down the road, a couple of weeks out, so that anybody that wants to come, they're given an opportunity. But we really need to start thinking about what you're going to do with it. The Road Commissioner's also got some information to add to it, and he needs to start budgeting as well. So we need to make a decision.
Very good.
So if I advertise it for a few, couple of weeks out?
Yeah, fine.
We got our monthly notable events from the Sheriff's Department that we always go over when they come in. The first one was a disturbance on Dennis Lane in Acton. Guys all set? It's difficult if you're talking in the background, so I can't hear with the mic. Dennis Lane, a personal disturbance. The next one was a criminal investigation for an alleged child abuse going on. That one's in Chapley. They did make mention that the deputies participated in wreaths across America. The next notable event was on December 13th in Chapley, another domestic disturbance. December 14th, continuous investigation on a child abuse case going on in Chapley. Domestic disturbance on 12/18 on Acton Ridge Road, and then on 12/19, another domestic violence assault arrest in Chapley. And then on 12/21, home in Chapley, that son assaulted his father and fled to the woods. And then on the 27th, deputies were contacted for a male in the area of 109 in Acton that was acting strange and yelling at motorists, although no crime seemed to be committed. They did follow up on that. They also provided the overall call breakdown that I forwarded you. Majority of them are citizens, medicals, they've got quite a few 911 hangups, and of course, motor vehicle stops. And I'll forward that to you, so you can look at it in more detail.
Okay.
Next is just a reminder that dog licenses expired December 31st. As of today, we still had 14 pages with about 30 to 35 per page of unlicensed dogs. February 1st, $25 late fees going into effect by state statute, and then the animal control officer takes over the list and starts issuing summons. So please come in and register your dog.
What's the consequence of a summons?
Normally, or COVID times, normally, they would write a summons and get filed at the district court, and they would handle it. Fees, probably.
Okay.
There is, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, the CEO slash Planning Board came to you and talked to you about a possible moratorium. They did actually take the vote as requested, and they were in favor of moving forward with the moratorium. They since have drafted it, and everybody has a copy of the draft. The draft went to the town's attorney, who made some changes to it, and today, I believe, it was sent back out to the Planning Board to look at. They've got a meeting tomorrow night, and we are thinking or hopeful that they're going to take a final vote on it. If they do, we need to think about scheduling a special town meeting. So in an effort to not have to wait until the following Wednesday, I'm looking for your permission, if they vote to support the moratorium, how it's written, or come to an agreement on the document, I'm going to work with the Warren Finance and look at the schedule and go ahead and schedule it, and start preparing a warrant for you guys to possibly sign next week.
Okay. Does it require an approval by us to schedule that?
No. I mean, you've already agreed to have one.
Yeah.
We've got to meet the state statute about how many days, so we'll kind of work that out and pick a day, you know, an evening that you guys are generally here.
Are there any other potential agenda items?
Well, that was the next item.
Oh, okay.
So we still have to figure out what we're going to do with the Sheriff's Department. And I know that, you know, I'm hesitant to have too much of a discussion without David because, again, he's a big part of it. But we're still trying to determine if... We're trying to figure out what's going on with the Sheriff's Deputy. We talked about our guy getting promoted. Couple people have applied. Right now, we're looking at an increase of about $8,085 to see us through, see us just through June. So we would have to have a special town meeting. There, the first opinion from legal is that we don't have the authority to dissolve the contract without town meeting approval. We're still looking into a couple of things. But if the Sheriff's Department dissolves it, that's different. I mean, that's out of our control. The sheriff has asked for a little more time on it, but if you're having a special town meeting, it may be the time to consider it. The contract, in any event, will only go through the end of 2022. He is hopeful now that possibly he can extend the contract. He's had some staffing changes and thinks that some things may be looking better for them, but that would be the only thing that I can think of on special.
I see.
I mean, if the voters choose not to approve it, then that kind of, you know, takes care of itself. But if they choose to, then you would be in the contract through December of '22. And then in June, at our regular annual town meeting, if you decided to move it forward, then another contract would be on there for another three or four years, whatever it is.
That's a joint contract with Chapley?
Correct.
Do we know what they're doing?
Well, I know as of today, because they're getting ready to vote on their town meeting by secret ballot, and they've got about two weeks before they go to print, they did decide to put the entire amount that they would need on their ballot.
Okay.
As if it was staying in place.
Yeah.
The windows are done. We still have a few left. I don't know if anybody wants them. I'm going to let them advertise for maybe another week, and then our handyman is going to take them to the transfer station, so we can move them along. There is one window, I don't know if anybody noticed, the first window out here across from the bathrooms, that is different than the others, the panels. Apparently, the wrong order came in. See how they have the grids on them, and that one doesn't?
Oh, that one doesn't. It's smaller.
He's ordered it, and it'll be in about a week or two, and he'll come swap it out. And then the last thing was, I put together the office hours, so I just wanted to see if this is what you had intended. So in an effort to ensure open, transparent communications between the Board of Selectmen and property owners of the Town of Acton, the Selectmen are pleased to announce their new office hours. A member of the Board of Selectmen will be present at the Town Hall the second and third Wednesdays from 9:00 to 11:00, the first and last Thursday from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for public input. Please be advised, these hours are only with one Selectman, and said Selectman will not have any decision-making authorities until bringing the concern back to the full board at the next regularly scheduled meeting. These times are being offered in hopes of allowing residents to share any thoughts or concerns, both positive and negative, with the Selectmen regarding the Town of Acton. Thank you in advance. We look forward to seeing you.
Great.
What time was it again on Wednesdays?
So we said 9:00 to 11:00 on Wednesdays, second and third, and then the first and last will do Thursdays, 4:00 to 6:00.
Wonderful.
All right. So we'll get that advertised.
Okay.
And that's all I have had tonight, sir.
All right. The warrants have been taken care of, so...
You signed, I signed, I know. Yep. So we're good.
So approval of the agendas?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Okay. Minutes of the last meetings?
I will...
We have four of them, huh?
Yes, we do. We have four. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meetings of December 15th, December 16th, December 22nd, and December 29th.
I'll second. All in favor? Or any discussion?
No.
All in favor? All right. Thank you.
There we go.
Okay. Department head committee chair updates.
Evening. Rick Smith, Chief, Acton Fire Rescue. Just got little updates from the department, because it's been a little while since I've stopped in. People busy. I have all of our new full-time employees onboard. They're all working out great. I've been very happy with who we hired. I know that a bunch of the citizens have met them and got to know them, unfortunately because they needed their services, but they're all very pleased with what care they're running. The generator is to be delivered any day now. I've confirmed that it is on a truck on its way. So as soon as our electrician lets me know when it's being delivered, we'll get it all up and running. The tanker truck, the last update I got was from two weeks ago. They expected the chassis sometime in February. All of the other stuff is in and ready to go, so as soon as the chassis shows up, it'll all get welded and mounted and start putting it together. So we should... I don't want to give you a date, because every time I seem to pick one, it's going to get worse. And that's just the world we're in right now. So, other than that, no other updates.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Old business, policies.
So I was hoping that we could go through some of these, just to get proposed changes, so that we can start working on them for signatures next week. The first one that we had was the abatement policy. Did have O'Donnell and Associates review this. The only recommendation that he had in regards to changing it is actually number one. It currently says that a written application must be completed for each abatement request. He wants to adjust that to say a written abatement must be completed for each abatement requested by a property owner or taxpayer, or by a property owner for other than an in-house and clerical error, if you will. So essentially, if somebody comes to him and says, "You're taxing me on .5 acres, and I really only own .3," there's no reason for them to fill out a written application. They're going to go out and measure it, they're going to make the change, you're going to sign the abatement, and everybody's going to be happy. If it's an actual written... It's an actual abatement because they feel like it's completely over-assessed for different reasons than they would require it, but he just wants some flexibility on not needing a written application if it's something in-house. So other than that one change that I'll make sound a little smoother.
I had a few comments?
Sure.
Okay. I am 3A, where it says the property is overvalued, the assessed value overestimates the just value. Is that a defined term in assessment world?
Yes.
It is?
The just value, yes.
All right. Fine. Thank you. And then under 5B, where it says, "Current assessment of at least three similar properties that show the subject to be inequitably assessed." Is that within a particular mileage?
It's usually within the same county. They look at the sales ratios in the county.
Same county?
That's what they normally... As long as they can. I mean, once in a while, you'll get a property that they have to go outside of, but they generally try to stay in the same town or at least county.
Great. So do we want to take these one by one and approve them, or what are we hoping for tonight?
So I'm hoping to make the minor change and then prepare it for signatures next week.
Okay. Very good.
So that's... The abuse and molestation prevention, this was just recently adopted. Other than noticing that the date was missing, this was written by our insurance company for coaches and volunteers. I don't have any changes for it.
Okay. So will we make a motion?
You don't have to make a motion. I'm just more input if you have any changes that you can bring back next week.
I thought it was fine. I mean, we just got it. Was it last year? Or...
The background checks, are they just criminal? Is that what we're doing here?
Yes. We do. I do the background checks for all coaches and volunteers. It's just criminal.
Just criminal. Okay. Thank you. All right. What's next?
Next was the acceptance of the credit and debit card policy. This, again, is standard from the middleman who has informed me. It's the agency that all municipalities use. It's... We don't have any changes, but certainly...
And they collect and keep the fee? Is that the idea?
Two points. Yes.
Yep.
It's a processing fee. We have it in some time, but when we first did this, we looked at several different credit card companies, and they all seemed to charge some sort of fee unless we could guarantee a certain amount of revenue.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So the pandemic policy. This one is fairly new. Have you had a chance to go through this one?
Yeah.
I had it this morning.
This one came directly from Maine Municipal.
It looked fine to me.
Yeah. So it's just updated based on the new guidelines from 12/29 as far as exposure, so... And the personnel, I think that that's one that we're going to have to go through line by line. We'll hold that one off until David.
Yes. Good.
Because there's so many changes to that one.
Right. Okay. 2022-23 audit?
So last week, I mentioned that RHR Smith had put together what they call, you know, an engagement letter and a fixed assets letter for the upcoming year. We started to have a conversation as to what direction you wanted to go to. I spoke to the Treasurer, and she, you know, has no opinion one way or the other, doesn't care what we do in regards to what company. So is it the Board's intent for us to put a bid together? It's been a few years, and see who else is out there?
I would like to.
Yes.
Yes.
So I'll bring the actual bid to you next week, but maybe, Tom, I can have you look at it during the week and...
The bid document?
Yeah.
Yeah. I understand other towns have had a difficult time getting firms to apply?
Yes.
Well, we should think about how we're going to approach the bid, then. Do you typically go within the county, or do you go beyond that?
Well, we... No. Certainly can be outside of the county. I don't think that our current one, Buxton, well, Buxton is, no. We'll... Anywhere in the state, I mean, if they're willing to travel and come down and do our audit, then certainly we'll open it up and spend more money advertising it really outside of the county as much as we can.
I'm happy to look at the...
Yeah. Okay. So we'll grab some surrounding ones, and what we normally do, too, is call other towns and see who they have, and try to mail them out to them to attract interest.
Good. New business, medical director posting.
All right. So our fire chief is here tonight to explain to you this new required position of a medical director and ask your permission to get this posted and advertised, so we can get it filled as soon as possible.
Yeah. So the MDMs has, for a long time, allowed us to share medical directors with regions. And so we're part of the Southern Maine region. We're going to use the Southern Maine Medical Director, who will discuss all the departments in the Southern Maine region who did not have their own medical director. Now, the MDMs requires that we each have our own individual medical director at the service level. So we need to post a job, and I'll put it out to the medical directors I know that are doing that job. They have to be licensed, and to be certified. There's a whole process. So they're basically already listed, people that are out there. We'll put that information out. We'll see who we get back and go off of what they offer us and things like that, like we would for any other job. It's basically a contract-type position, but they'd be brought on as an employee because they can work and respond to incidents if we need them. Any large-type incidents, they would come and help. They're a physician. So we would actually have an MD on the payroll, basically, which would really benefit the town. They also assist us in quality improvement, quality insurance of all our medical care. They overview things. They give me another layer, like, much like when you guys have an issue with an employee or something in town, you can call a lawyer and ask. Now I'll have a medical physician that I can call and ask and say, "Hey, was this care correct? Was this the best thing that we could have done? How can we make this better?" Some of the ones that I've reached out to also offer training and education, where they'll come in four times a year and train our people from an emergency rescue doctor's perspective. It's going to be beneficial.
How many hours is this?
It's not an hourly...
Okay. That's what I was kind of wondering. What is it?
We have to have the person.
So is it like just an on-call or like this?
How many hours do you think they would work per month?
It would vary depending on...
Roughly.
Sorry.
I mean, they've got to come up with something for the stipend amount, so they've got to come up with some sort of idea, if you think, you know, 10 to 20, more, 50 to 60.
Per month?
Yeah. Because it's a... I mean, as you had it presented, kind of, it was a monthly stipend.
Right. Basically, be on-call for when we need... It's like a... We'll give them more of a routine, like we have for our people.
Okay. So it's not an employee?
But they're also going to be putting in... They're also going to be putting in work on reviewing our runs, training and education, and then has the ability to come out and help us in the field if we need it.
So they're not actually an employee, but an independent contractor?
It walks a fine line between the two, because they're... We have to bring them in because they're a physician. We have to bring them on as employees so they get certain protections of rights under their medical license and things like that, to be able to perform what we do. Look, I'm a paramedic. If I'm on the other side of the state of Maine, I'm a licensed paramedic, and I can act in a certain accordance with my license. But I can't do everything I could if I was being covered by the town that I was working for. We get different liabilities and abilities to do things based on those laws that we have to follow that are separate from the MDMs. And this is one of the cases where the MDMs said, "You have to have this," and so now everybody is scrambling to get these positions filled and taken care of. That's kind of the position they put it in.
So where is the compensation number coming from if we don't have any idea how much they'll be working roughly? How do you come up with a number?
The position has to be filled, and so we put the bids out, and basically, it's how much do they cost versus what they offer us, and we're trying to come up with what's going to be best for our town.
Does the state require particular coverage levels, or...
More...
In terms of the... Well, if they're an employee, there must be some... Are they salaried or hourly, or...
There's no stipulations on that. They have to be... We have to have a medical director on our employee.
Yeah.
So is that a town decision, how they're paid? Okay. So that's something you guys can talk about.
So you're thinking it might be a salaried position?
The ones that I approached, the ones that... We've been looking at doing this for a long time because of the benefits of it. Now we have to do it. And so now it's not, hey, let's see if we can get the money. Hey, let's see if this is a good fit.
Yeah, we have to.
But we have to do it. And so the ones I've been talking to, one of them being Dr. Brown, who came out and taught for us, he was explaining to me the ins and outs of stuff. I've also talked to a couple of the ones that worked for Sanford, Kenny Bunk, Bitterford, because I sit in meetings routinely with all these physicians. And so I picked all of their brains, and Schmitz and Mike, I'm just... That's all right. We worked through all this. We're going to do what's best. We're going to get these bids back from these different groups, and then we'll all sit, like we normally do when we hire a position like this, and come up with what's best.
Okay.
Like I said before, it's, we have to do it. So it's really not... It's not really a discussion point. We have to do it, or we're going to get our ambulance license taken away.
Right.
It's not going to be good for anybody. We put together a rough plan of what we're looking for based on what I could expect.
So are they like on-call 24/7 for you? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Different ones offer different levels. Some of them will come up to the call and help you treat the patient on major incidents or ones where they're available. Other ones will only be available by phone or email. It really depends on what you get from who you're talking to. It may be no different than any other position that you set that we would create for another town employee.
We just with the new earned time off, and we're still going to have to track hours and, you know, because they are an employee. So we'll work all that out. The only thing, because we didn't get it on last week, so I would just ask that the Board put it out one more week, and we really should advertise it for two weeks. Today's the 5th, so if we accept them maybe until 3:00 next Wednesday, the following Wednesday, the 19th, we can have an executive session to look at them that night, so we can get moving on it.
Okay.
Okay. So this is the posting you want?
This will be the posting that we put out.
You want authorized?
Yeah. We'll adjust the dates.
So it's just the first page.
Come to make a motion?
Yeah. I'm just kind of going through this. I was just thinking about a few things.
So the agreement, the draft agreement that's there, you're not making any decisions on that tonight?
So it's just the first page?
Just the first page.
So we're just going to make a motion to post for the Acton Fire Rescue. We're looking for a medical director.
Perfect.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor? There you go. Okay. The meeting date, week of January 24th.
Yeah. So Tom has his required training, happens to be that same Wednesday night, on the 24... Well, 20... I think it's the 26th. on the 24... Well, I think it's the 26th. So, two things. So he'll be unavailable the 26th. We can either not have a meeting that week. We can pick another day, or based on the timeline, if we can pull it together, we could schedule the special time meeting that week and not have a meeting. So I guess more of just a conversation to say he's not going to be available that night because of required training.
Maybe we could do the special time meeting.
Yeah, it could be three weeks away. That gives you enough time to get that organized.
Assuming the planning board votes on it tomorrow night.
Right.
And we'll touch base with the Warren Finance, but yeah.
Why don't we leave it open for that purpose, and if they don't approve it tomorrow night, then we can reconsider.
Okay, all right.
Job description.
So we have been working diligently on a job description. Sorry, I should have gave you copies in ahead of time. This is for the transfer station superintendent, building maintenance position. I know you've gone through it and made some minor changes, which I fixed. I don't know if you want to go through it. That's up to you, but it needs to be approved.
This is what we just talked about and revised, so...
Yeah, made minor changes to it, but it's all in line with the current position. There's nothing really new to it. It covers everything from the transfer station to building maintenance. It's really a combination of the two and the budget, state, town, recording.
Do they have a motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the transfer station supervisor slash building maintenance position from the town of Acton job description.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Very good.
Excuse me, Tom. Dan, I'm getting a message the video is out.
Do we have to go back, or are we all set?
No, we're all set. It's just the live went out.
All right, why don't we wait until we hear from him? We're back on? Very good. Transfer station superintendent, actually.
So it's been weeks of reviews, weeks of resumes. We're ready to make a decision and...
Make a decision.
Formal announcement?
All right, so I'm going to make a motion. How do I word this? We're going to make a motion to accept or ask Jeff Murray, who we've met with several times. Come on up if you'd like. We'd like to offer him the transfer station position and the building maintenance position.
Hello, thank you.
Hello, welcome, welcome.
Yeah, so I did meet with Jeff, and I met and went over most of the details. I've got some little paperwork from Duke, but he was on board, and we're looking for an official motion, and we wanted to introduce him and get his face out there.
Oh, good, thanks.
Just been with us for a while anyhow, so your face up there. People know who you are.
So you would be starting Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
Is it Monday?
I did ask him, because we're getting a little overloaded, if he wanted to do some building maintenance stuff the next couple of days.
That's great.
He's welcome to come by.
I think there's some backup there, so...
Yes.
Very good.
Yes, yeah, perfect. So there's a motion?
There's a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Congratulations, Jeff.
Very good. All right. RSMs. This came up now a couple times, and at the last meeting in particular, the desire to have this software updated so that it can be used to support the planning done by the road agents. We've had a chance to talk a little bit more about this, and as I understand it, this software was acquired maybe 10 years or so ago at a cost of $250, and then there was a subsequent repurchase, I guess, or a second purchase of it for $250. The software is not supported. The last update was in 2016, which, quite frankly, gives us a lot of pause. That means if you get a new computer with an updated Windows application or whatever, you might find that that application no longer works, and the company is not maintaining the software. So that's typically something you want to avoid. You don't want to have unsupported software supporting a main function like this would be. And prior to actually going through the effort of updating that software with all that data, we think it's worthwhile to step back, take a fresh look at what software is currently available that I think would take advantage of other technologies that have advanced in the last number of years around mapping and a data that's generally available that perhaps would make the whole maintenance of this much easier. So we had a chance just to look at a couple of applications. I did a quick search on my phone, and there's some really impressive applications out there on the surface that I think we should take a look at this quickly and try to assess whether or not, before we go through this effort, bringing it in. And I understand the application was hard to work with in the first place, and the training wasn't very good, and there are all kinds of issues around this. So let's not just use it because we paid for it, because it wasn't that much money. Let's make sure that we get the right application, and if we're going to go through this effort, it's something that's going to serve us for a long period of time. So that's pretty much where we are now, and, you know, if the road agents or any... Had any thoughts or comments about that? I know I'm sort of sticking with...
Nope.
Sticking this to you at the last minute, but I think we're better off holding off on this.
We just want to make sure that we get something that is going to be in use, and it's going to be updated, and it's going to work with things, not something that's obsolete.
We want to make sure they know that all of the data that they've already collected would go into another program. None of that would be...
Right, we wouldn't have to redo anything.
No, we would lose the data, but...
Right.
They're just looking for a more up-to-date as we started looking at...
I think we'll end up with a much better system if we... This was just an old application, old technology, cumbersome, not well-supported, no training. Everything about it was probably... At the time, it was a good thing to do, but no longer. Okay, so we're going to look at that, and we'll reach out to the road committee and the road agents, and as we look at alternatives. Okay? We have an executive session?
Do you want to do public comment first?
Do you want to do public... Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah, why don't we do the public comments? Great. Any comments, please?
Two things. We've had this problem with these lights for quite a while, and if you flick the switch a couple of times or whatever, sometimes they'll work, sometimes they won't. I think we'd be well off to have an electrician come in and fix this problem before we end up having an electrical fire. The other thing is, the special town meeting that you guys were talking about, I think, this is my opinion, personal opinion, that having this special town meeting sooner than later is a problem, and the reason for that is we're talking about inordinance. And the proposed ordinance is causing quite a bit of controversy, especially around the people that run the gravel pits. And I realize a town meeting can be a public hearing. However, you cannot change the wording of an ordinance at a town meeting. And if you had a public hearing prior to that, and the planning board took input from the concerns about what's there, I mean, they could either change it or not change it. But I think it'd be in the best interest of the town to have a public hearing prior to the special town meeting.
Okay. Okay, I guess we'll take that under advisement, and, you know, given that we may also be dealing with the security issues, the police, I think that is something public may want a hearing on as well to get feedback on, so why don't we take that back? And when David's back, we can talk more about that.
Good idea.
Thank you, Dennis.
And the windows, as Mr. Lopez is coming up, the windows, Jeff will see, not the windows, excuse me, the lights, Jeff will tell you that when we did a walkthrough, he knows that's at the top of the list, and he's going to be reaching out to the electrician. So appreciate you pointing that out, Dennis, because even the library and hallway do that.
Yeah.
So...
I have a couple of questions on the new officer, the sheriff, saying if it's the bids that are coming in are for $8,050 or right around there, more than what was already approved by the town. This is a share type of situation. Will that cost be split with Shapley?
That is Acton's share.
Shapley will pay his own share.
It is split, but we... Yeah, that's our share.
Then my second question is, we're looking at having a medical director. I said the problem with that, if we didn't get it done, was that they would lose the ambulance license that would be taken away. Is that the only ramification that there is?
Yeah, it's a pretty massive ramification. We wouldn't...
No, I understand that.
Right, it had, yeah.
I was just wondering if there was like some state fees that would go along with that, because you're saying that it has to be done, so I would think that that's a state-mandated type of thing?
Yes.
But there are no fees or charges if you don't get it done?
Well, we would go through the MEMS disciplinary process. You and I could just talk for hours about how fun that is.
No, that's all right. I've had the discipline in my life. All right, so that's a little quick one.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, do we want to go through the public announcements?
No, we got one.
Oh, okay.
Just curious. The deputy's contract is going up $16,000 above what it was approved at last year's meeting?
So the problem is, is that we entered into this contract, and we hired Deputy Sevigny, and when he was hired, he was hired at a particular tier based on his years of service and based on the contract negotiations with the union. When Deputy Sevigny got promoted, they posted the job, and the two people that applied that were interested in it were higher tiers, and based on their contract and years of service, if they were to be hired, they would have to be hired at their current rate. That's where the additional money is coming from.
No, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. It's simply a pass-through of the costs that are associated with those individuals, so... Okay, should we go through the announcements?
Do you want me to go through all, or...
I do. Okay. Planning Board, January 6th at 6:00. A site walk for 55 Red Gate Lane at 10:00 on January 8th. Conservation Committee at 7:00 on January 10th. Recreation Committee at 6:00 on January 11th. Board of Selectment Meeting at 6:00 on January 12th. Board of Selectment Meeting at 6:00 on January 19th. Planning Board at 6:00 on January 20th. Warrant and Finance at 6:00 on January 24th. And tentatively, well, no, this January 26th meeting is not going to be taking place, and we'll see about adding another date that week or maybe using that time for a special town meeting. Okay, we're going to go into an executive session, and we'll come back after that to simply open up the general session, and then we'll adjourn. So just so you know that, there won't be any further agenda items. So for those of you who don't want to stay around, you don't have to.
Yeah, and this is informational on personnel, so there won't be any decisions.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session. Personnel issue, MRSA 4056-A.
I'll second. All in favor? Thank you very much, everyone.
Hey, you boys over there, ship it.
Okay, coming out of the executive session, going back into general session.
I'll make a motion that we come out of executive session for a personal issue, MRSA 4056-A at 7:27.
I'll second. All in favor? All right, okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor? Great.
All righty.